It's zooming.
Oh, no, it's shared because I think I created a and then I shared it with you where if you create it and share it with me, it'd be in your documents. And sometimes I'm searching all over because it's like, okay, did you really make that document or did I make? Oh, the first night of the food drive?
It was the reading.
Okay, that's right.
There you go. All right. Seven o'clock called order verification of meeting notice.
Was posted and on the web.
And two roll call, please. And three approval of the agenda. And move on Mr. Brice boys to approve the agenda as presented is their second. Thank you by Mrs. France. All in favor, signify the same eye. And opposed, motion carries. For then approval of minutes, four one approval of the minutes of November ninth twenty twenty meeting.
A couple of them in the inlet every other week. Thanks. So.
I did not see anything on that November night, so I would.
Motion by Mrs. Peterson is her second. And Mrs. Blazinski all in favor, signify the same eye. Will be minutes for the October 12th twenty twenty meeting. Didn't notice anything. I have a total move by Mr. Brice boys. Is there a second? Miss Peterson, all in favor, signify the same eye. Or three, September twenty third twenty twenty approval of those minutes.
Again, I didn't see anything, so I would move to approve.
Second, the move by Mrs. Peterson, second by Mr. Brice boys, all in favor of approving the September twenty third minutes, signify the same eye. And opposed, motion carries. Five of them citizens form, any citizens wishing to speak?
Those on Zoom, if you want to unmute, we'll be able to hear you.
Hearing none, seeing none, we'll run to six and committee reports and minutes, six one finance and personnel from earlier this evening.
Okay, we had a few checks. We had a check to the state of Wisconsin for $4,899. It was a refund of a grant for a teacher jewel certification. We had a grant for two teachers, only one teacher did it. We had five one zero one nine to CDI computer dealers for $31,455. It was the Chromebooks and tablets that we ordered. They finally showed up. We had a CISA three check for $7,500 for social and emotional learning days that was paid for out of grant money. Sources of strength, we paid $5,000. Ms. Whitehead is going to take over for Mr. Ling on that. String heating electric, we had $1,942.75. That was for the wireless access points to the football field. And then we had set elementary data rack too. And our annual fee to go guardian for $5,223.40. Then we got the audit report back from Johnson and Block and the finance committee wanted the board to hear this line out of it. We would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the many courtesies extended to us by the district's personnel during the course of our work. In particular, we would like to note the considerable assistance and cooperation provided to us by Cheryl Richards and staff. So we thank her for that. And that was all we had.
Any other comments or questions for finance committee? Board members, I think everybody got the audit report and letters and that. So if you didn't pick one up before you leave.
Quiz at the next meeting? Yeah, that's a good idea. I approve. I said quiz at the next.
Okay, then any other things for finance personnel? Seeing none, six two policy from November eighteenth.
This is proudy and I, so we just went over basically the stuff that's posted and did send some stuff to the board. It should be later on in the thing. Just she said she was just tweaking some stuff and then we like on four point two got with Ms. Newkirk about the grading and graduation requirements and she did some research on that. We are, we are talking about changing the graduation requirements. We're talking about potentially adding weighted credits, of course. Why? But that's a big discussion, so we just stuck our toes in this week, last week. And we've got another meeting set up just to talk about it and it'll be a long drawn out process, but we want to make sure we have everybody.
Any other questions, comments for policy? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to seven and reports, seven one district administrators report.
All right. So I just wanted to remind everybody that the FFCRA gave everybody the ability to get paid for eighty hours of work through one of the COVID relief. I don't remember families first, I believe this one is. And that that benefit does expire on December thirty first with no, they don't think they're going to redo it. So we've had several people take care, take advantage of this when they've had to go home and be isolated due to an exposure. So it's really has helped quite a few of our staff members. DHS has a new dashboard. Has anybody clicked on it? It's pretty cool. You can go all the way down there. I was wanting to show you. It, you can go all the way to the school district data.
So as long as you know which little area is your school district.
But you have to literally go all the way to the bottom of this big huge page. So this is the census tract. This is by county. Anyway, you get the idea that. You can now click even by not quite sorry. To get the idea that we can go all the way to the individual school district. I don't know how they do that because there are two different counties, so. We did receive a study from Ford Analytics. There's a spreadsheet and it's talking about our broadband feed by county. So good for everybody know that information. And then I just put in my report, the this came from a weekly WUSA update, so Wisconsin Rural Schools Alliance. And so I went, I went through and read it. I pulled up the things that were the most, I guess, concerning to me or things that I thought you guys would would appreciate knowing. So there are some things that they're considering legislating, I guess is a good way to put it. So there's some stuff on open enrollment. Personal electronic computing device grants. We do get that usually every year, but they're saying now that we, if you got a CARES grant, then you shouldn't get this. But they don't start going to the private schools. Virtual instructions, lots of stuff on that. We have, anyway, there's tons of stuff. I'm worried about the, this or the state itself. We don't particularly have any private schools in our district. But that can be really harming to other school districts. Instruction, requiring teachers to teach from school, have to physically be located in the school building. And then if you don't, they would withhold our district equalization payment. And then it does have questioning, not questioning, they're giving you directives about closing school for virtual instruction or, I'm sorry, creating a virtual instruction days instead of leaving that up to us if we felt as a district that we needed to close for, say, thirty days or twenty five days or anything beyond fourteen. We couldn't do that anymore if this goes through and it would have to be approved by two thirds of the whole of you guys of the board. And then if, if we have parents that are going virtual and it's more than like fifty percent of the school year, we would have to pay the parents $371 per child. So again, things that are coming out of the legislation that make me a little worried. I don't see there's a lot of random reasons to sound this, but fairness is sometimes the biggest key.
Anything else then? Not any other questions, comments for business manager? Okay, seeing none, then seven two business manager report.
So there's just a list of reports and due dates and when they are done and what we have coming up. And I don't even have deadlines on the ten ninety nines and the W twos and the, but those are all January. We're going to be ramping up and lots of stuff to get to the IRS and social security administration as well as the staff. The next section down, I just highlighted those are the deadlines for school board candidates. To let everybody know when they have to have stuff in.
You're gonna start pointing at them?
No, but I did put the, you know, for anybody who's out there virtually or whatever, or looks at this, I put the incumbents and when the paperwork has to be turned into the district office, returned completed by January fifth. And then I just left the annual meeting. Publications out there for anybody who didn't see it before. It's there again. It is out on the web as well, but. So we've been busy.
Any other questions, comments for business manager?
We did start budget process with getting stuff out to teachers already for next year. So hoping to finish that process up earlier this year than we have in other years.
Anything else? Questions, comments? Okay, and none, and seven, three principals report, Mr. Electman's report.
He asked me to read because he's, he is online. Good evening all and welcome to the final board meeting of twenty twenty. As we all know, it has been an uncertain first semester. Student, parent, staff, school board members and everyone else involved have all been made to make adjustments due to COVID nineteen pandemic. After the nine week grading period, the staff and I tried to take steps to personally become more engaged. I personally sent an email to many parents and students asking what else our school could do to help ensure the students are engaged. I did not get a very large response. I've asked high school and middle school teachers to send reminder emails to students checking on their assignments. Our support staff is doing an amazing job working with students that are in need of extra help. Sam, Janelle and Sarah are doing excellent work contacting and zooming with students that that need the extra help. We all realize that in person is best for all involved, but for right now, virtual is the best that we can offer. We need students to zoom into their classes so that they have the best chance to continue to learn. Today, our four and a half week grade reports were due. The reason I mentioned that is because there are still many students who are refusing to zoom into the classes and therefore are not earning the grades that they could. It is very tough for educators to get their subject matter across to the students if they do not even take the time to attend the classes virtually. Classes are only twenty five minutes long with one hour office hours scheduled in the afternoon for any that need help. I would also like to thank Susan Blazinski for her dedication to the job as school board member. Her insight, knowledge and work ethic was greatly appreciated. Susan, you will be missed. Good luck to you and the family. Wausau is a great area and I know your family will thrive in central Wisconsin. In closing, I'd like to wish all a very merry Christmas and happy new year. May it be less stressful than this past year. Chris.
Thank you.
Questions or anything on that? Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Seven four then principal's report machine report.
I applaud the efforts of the parents and caregivers and their work with their children and teachers. It's through working together that the students will have their success. The routine of virtual classes going fairly well. Almost all students join every Zoom session every day. We do understand that there are times they won't be able to, and the teachers and caregivers or parents have found a way that works. Lesson videos are embedded into Schoology for access later when it is convenient for the families. I thank Michelle Wachshell for her fourteen years of commitment to our elementary students. She's off to new adventures and we wish her the best. My recommendation for the fifth grade teaching position is to hire a teacher this year. Mrs. Liz Pulvermacher has begun teaching in that position today and will continue through the end of first semester. It is my professional opinion that continuing with two teachers in this class, although small in numbers is what is best for the students, especially this year. I recommend the same for the reading position. Continue the position. Tonight, Mrs. Newkirk and Mr. Lang hosted our first ever virtual family literacy event. For the event, they sent home cookies made by Tina Ramsden with decorations to be decorated, a booklet of activities, and they read Twisted Night Before Christmas. At my last count on Friday, eighty plus students had signed up. That demonstrates reading is important to Ithaca families. So thank you to Mrs. Newkirk and Mr. Lang, as well as the children and families for participating. Miss Sarias, once again, sharing books with the students through a book pickup, books from past scholastic sales, books weeded from circulation, donated books, et cetera, are available in the commons for parents to pick up. Reading and the ability to do math are invaluable and we want to do what we can to provide books for students to have and enjoy. Parents and caregivers can donate as well. The elementary again support the passages food drive. There's a tote in the commons. They're also collecting decorations to share with the nursing homes. We have put off educator effectiveness, which is us like a staff collaboration. We will begin working on this second semester. Teachers are completing a narrative and it's explained in there what areas they're going to be reflecting on. They'll also define a student learning goal that's based on data gathered this year as well as a professional practice goal, which focuses on an area the teacher wants to improve upon as a professional. Although EE has evaluation in the title, I believe it is truly a collaborative effort to provide the best teaching and learning opportunities. Elementary teaching teams continue meeting as we did last year to build a cohesive learning environment for the students. Teacher teams work to offer similar learning opportunities, discuss what works and what doesn't. Their focus this year is what do we want all students to learn and be able to do? The PLC number one question. They'll be meeting weekly for thirty minutes and monthly for two hours per month during in person and one hour per week during virtual instruction. And Mr. Monty and I, along with the other elementary teachers, have been discussing improving the playground, both the need to improve and the how to improve. More discussion will come at the next building and ground meeting.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, and seven five curriculum.
Staff focus and time has been spent learning how to better utilize Schoology and engage students in their Zoom classes. As an administrative team, we decided that time was important to give staff while they learn this, a very steep learning curve. Moving forward, we are continuing the work begun last year, identify essential standards and create a pacing guide of those standards. All teachers are to complete this work for two additional classes by the end of the school year. The three, five grade team wants to move forward with learning more and possibly piloting a standard space report card in the fall. I've reached out to area schools and several elementary schools and season three U standard space report cards. Part of this involves our belief for the purpose of grading and how to be more consistent when assessing the standards the teachers and DPI have deemed essential for each grade and across the grade bands. We will do our due diligence to do what is best for our students. All teaching staff will be involved in educator effectiveness, which is truly a collaboration to improve our teaching practice and increase student learning for all students at Ithaca. This is a requirement of DPI, but also best for our students as it causes us to reflect on our practices and look for what does work, but also what isn't working based on data. Elementary have live teaching via Zoom Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, beginning at eight and ending at noon. During that time, they have folk group lessons, small group instruction, individual or small group assistance from a paraprofessional. Middle and high school have live teaching via Zoom Monday through Friday from seven fifty five till twelve twenty. Their classes are twenty five minutes in length with additional assistance in the afternoon during office hours. All teachers email parents and students regularly if they do not attend Zooms, not complete assigned work. It should be noted that work during this time is essential due to the shortened timeframe. Teachers were instructed to focus on what is essential to learn.
Any other questions, comments?
Seven, six, then athletic characters report, Mr. Coleman. Right now, I guess we'll start with what's on top there. A lot of times. Some of this stuff was from like the earlier in the fall, but the second one, there's a link there for all of you and anybody at home. It's the same one that we use for our live stream. You can find it under school upset, but occasionally people are still like saying, where is it? Where is it? Click explore is the fourth thing that we use it for everything. If you want to rewatch stuff, it saves it automatically. So if you missed it, you can go back and do that. I think that's going very well. Obviously, there's still a learning curve for people learning how to use it. There's been a few pickups. Most recent one had wrestling being on Friday when guys were warming up upstairs, they tripped the cord. Which obviously took you on a laptop, plugged it back in and the laptop had said it was working, but you actually physically still had to restart it for it to get back working. It's like, why isn't it working? It's been, our answer is texted back before. So again, still learning how that process works, but I think it's, it's better and better the more we use it. People where that it's something that you can rewatch, which is nice too. It's still there. Girls basketball is eighteen oh. I'm very happy with how they're following protocol and the quality communication even on Friday, I had appointments and I was even with lots of people. Whether things happen, I just, it's been very easy that way. I'm definitely seeing improvement just with, you know, the smooth games, necessarily show that a score, but you can see with the young team, just the work they're doing, how hard they're working and there's definitely a lot of promise. I'm excited to see where they go and it plays Thursday at home. And the parts of the JV team, so there will be two games. Points basketball is one and one. We won their home for last week against the, or two weeks ago against the Soto. They play tomorrow, just one game. Both of us are currently not having the numbers we were hoping for for JV. Hopefully by the end of the week, we're able to have enough for JV. We're still trying to get some happy going, be knowledgeable kids. Clear to play. Same thing like basketball. I'm happy with, you know, communication with Coach Moser, especially it's easy, obviously with both of us being in the building, trying to go through all of the stuff first act. It's been, been difficult. The last paragraph two wrestling, again, really happy how last Thursday turned out. We had our first duel. It's a team I thought did very well and won and was also new for people that are familiar with wrestling, first time ever middle school, high school were together. So that was just a new experience, how we were going to set it up and what we were going to do with the kids and how that was going to go. I get, I was happy with how it turned out, happy with how the coaching staff spoke for high school, middle school, you know, for kids, how the crowds have been for all three teams posted. All that's gone because again, just being somebody who worries about a lot of stuff, a lot of the stress of what's going to happen. And so we're pleased with how all three staffs or kind of middle school or staffs are doing and how the games have been going and all the live streams.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Seven, seven then title one report, Mrs. Newkirk.
So I put in a kind of a overview of what I think we're going to be doing this year. It's been a very different year. So we have had a lot of substitutes this year, just with teachers that have had babies this year. And so I tried to like help them, especially in the more upper elementary. A lot of lessons for them or had them, help them create like their reading groups or whatever they needed help with. I'll just mention a few things. I spent a lot of time creating agendas for the meetings that we have to hold with our pit grant. Like tomorrow, I have a meeting all day for our pit grant to learn what our next steps are at the grant. Tonight, we held our which our first virtual literacy night and and currently Mrs. Jane has asked me to start trying to work on, so we're going to do it over the break. A training for the paras and for substitutes, so we can better put them with assisting students in the. So we've been kind of taught. So we have more of a streamlined system that when we have a person that we can train. Does anybody have any questions? And Kyle, I'm really going to miss him. He was with the seventh and eighth grade. He had four classes, two substitute. He also taught very important. He had one year in person. He also had two thirty houses.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Newkirk. Eight and O business, eight one, learning modalities, eight one one, discussion possible action on learning modalities.
I just wanted to point out that if we were in person today, we would have had it both. I had a scare in the high school and most of them were gone today, but tomorrow, some of them should be back. So when they have to isolate because they could have potentially been exposed, we wouldn't have been able to have Facebook today, so. You don't necessarily need any action on this. So you don't necessarily need any action on this.
I have a couple things, just for minutes, and for those that are listening, some things. When we return to in-person after virtual, I'm good, I really would encourage families to contact the office if there's any positive cases in the home during break, and to complete the checklist during that vacation. And if they were to exclude, you know, to be really, it's going to take the community now to keep us in person, just like Julie just mentioned, to follow all the recommendations so that when they come back, our staff doesn't contract it. Because if, right now, you know, we're trying to get subs, there just aren't any in the community. And I was just talking with Andrea today about, of the list of subs who we have, the two that we hired to be our COVID subs, they're working now long-term. Another one is good for the rest of the semester, and then is out. You know, they're just, we're very short. So I just encourage the families to do their due diligence to stay home at the beginning if they're, if they have any of the symptoms that would exclude them, so that we don't inadvertently bring it into the building, so that we can return and stay in person when we come there.
Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. 8-1-2 then, discussion possible action on locker room use for middle school students.
In the past couple of months, the lockers, the middle school students have been cohorting, so they haven't really needed lockers. But it's winter now, and when we come back to school, we'd like to acknowledge that they could start using their lockers if nothing else at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day to put their coats and things in.
Any discussion on that? More so just informational? Were you looking for direction on that, Ms. Farnie, or just more informational?
Well, we'd like, we'd like you to okay it, I guess.
Move to approve.
That's okay.
The move by Mr. Brisbois, second by Ms. Blazinski. All in favor of allowing the use of middle school students for the lockers, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed? Any other discussion on that? Okay, 8-1-3 then, discussion possible action on playing pep band.
So when we had pep band for football, it worked out well. They were outside, and the same thing occurred a lot of them. They stood outside, but it's really hard to play pep band in a snowstorm. So we wanted some guidance from you if you want the pep band to play. You know, we know that there's lots of things missing in activities this year, so it would be something good for the students. But again.
Mary Beth is on.
Oh, she is. I will let her talk then, I'm sorry.
She wants to.
Hi. Well, the students and I were wondering if we could possibly play pep band. The plan would be to go into the commons. I thought that might be a good place to go, since there's not concessions, that we could be away from everyone, because we know we can't be in the gym playing. The students have masks that they have on their instruments, which helps with the cutting down on any aerosol transmission. And I thought we would play pre-game if we're allowed to, and then the kids would have to leave a course, so that they're not trying to stay in there to watch the game. So just, that was kind of my idea, and just wondering if, if it was possible.
Comments, discussions?
I had talked with Mary Beth, and I thought that this was a good idea.
I would make a motion that we allow them playing in the pep band in the commons area.
I only have one comment. Are we worried about when they're coming in between the games, the people coming, having to, you know, the pep band's going to be in the commons, and then the parents and that coming in?
They'll have to vacate the cafeteria, they won't be able to stay in there. So I would imagine that it.
What if they're playing between games? Well, isn't that when?
That's the switch over.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. That's, that's the only thing I can see, is if we can, you know what I mean? So that, you know, because you're going to have the most congestion at that time.
They're not using the bathrooms closest to the, or in the hallway here.
This side, yeah.
This side. So if the band was on that side, you could, I could perceive people entering on the nearest to the outside door, door of the gym possibly, if they want to do it.
Can people leave the gym out to the bar?
No.
No?
Okay. No, those are emergency exits.
Yeah. People come in and it goes on the floor. Yeah. What about in the mental?
Sorry. I was thinking if we could stand over by, like, as far over by the kitchen as possible.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're okay with that, that's just part of the way, but I, I just, when I saw that as a possible congestion.
Yeah, I see that when she said pre-game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After the break, I understand what you're talking about.
After the break, Mary Beth, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
After Christmas break?
Um, yes.
And this would be like for the varsity, right?
It would approximately be, you know, usually it's about half the man for each, for boys and for girls. So, you know, you're talking probably about 30 to 35 kids. And if we space out and are over by the kitchen, we can even go towards like the, the door of like Julie's office, even down that way.
Kind of blasting through that comments.
It'll be loud.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I, I will make that motion that pep band can start playing after the holiday break.
Move by Mrs. Peterson is her second. Second by Mrs. Rowe. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, then, on to nine then, New Business, 9-1, 9-1-1, discussion possible action on bills and balances. So this month, we had total receipts of $420,909.53 and total disbursements of $331,288.30.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Blazinski to approve the bills and balances as presented.
And I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Blazinski, yes. Mr. Brisbois?
Yes.
Mrs. Barry? Yes. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Manning? Mrs. Peterson? Yes. Mrs. Rowe? Yes.
Motion carries then. 9-1-2, discussion possible action on winter sports on youth wrestling.
Youth services. What else? We don't expose there. How are you doing? Are you addressing?
No, I, I know, I talked to Marty Farting, who kind of runs the youth program, and I thought they kind of felt like they were going to wait till after the break and kind of see what's going on that night. But I don't want to speak for him, but I'm.
Isn't that what he said last time?
I think that's what he said last time. And I was talking to him about something for the barn, and he mentioned that again. So I, I don't want to be wrong, but I think that's what they said, and I'm assuming with nobody.
I can, I can jump in, I'm sorry. It's Jamie. I'm the vice president on the wrestling board. We are looking at trying to start a youth group from second grade or the oldest second graders to on up that can attend state, because there is a state tournament for those youth. But we're looking at possibly, if you guys don't, if you would allow us to have at least second grade, we would leave the younger ones out. We hate to leave the younger ones out, but we kind of want to work with you guys on if you would allow us to have a season. We'd like to start a sign-up January 7th.
Start a sign-up?
A sign-up. Sign up for those youth?
Okay. When would you look at possibly starting actual practices?
It would probably be that following Monday. Because I believe the seventh is a Thursday.
Yeah.
And then they would follow, start that Monday. I mean, we would like to do all the kids, but I guess we're just to the point of, I mean, if we have to give up something, then we'd have to give up the littler kids and just do the ones that are state-eligible, free state youth.
Where are you going to practice?
They tabled it.
Yeah, we tabled that until this meeting, and Marty, I don't know where he's at. I mean, we can wait till January 11th and talk to you guys at that meeting and start our season after that.
Normally, on other years, they've met or practiced two nights a week. So that would, you know, I guess, just kind of have, you know, figured out what you're going to do, you know, like with basketball and the high school wrestling, going to do what you're going to do as far as, you know, protocols and things like that, and practice and times and potential numbers and, you know, kind of some of that information, and, you know, who's, who's going to be responsible for those types of things.
Okay, yep. Because we do have a coach in mind. I mean, we do have a coach. We just wanted to see if we worked with you guys, if, and found a place, if you guys would approve us to start with our youth. And I think Amber Hillby might be online, too. She might know more details on it. Oh, I think she got, she might have got kicked off.
I don't see her.
All right, so we'll just table it, we'll just table it till the 11th, and then we'll come back to you guys with where we're going to practice.
Yep, and then kind of some of the protocols, some of that things, you know, maybe talk to the high school wrestling coaches, because I was at the, I did run the clock at the meet, and I was impressed with how well that had gone. That's the first high school event I've got to see this year, just with everything going on. And so I was really impressed with how, how well that went and everything. So I think there's some really good guidance you guys could get and follow from there to be able to do it.
And you probably want to put, put your sign-up out before that, so you have numbers to bring to the January 11th meeting.
Yep, we will do that. We just kind of wanted to see if it's an option at the moment, so, okay. We will get some numbers for you guys and bring it back to you on the 11th.
Any other discussion on that? Hey then, 9-1-3, discussion possible action on middle school girls' basketball. Oh, I just, those two are just odd, I mean, just, just two things. Obviously, I'm guessing because they're going to be middle school wrestling, but that's going to be a lot to happen as things currently stand with COVID stuff after Christmas.
Both of them start after Christmas.
Yeah. Girls is still first, and once the girls' season ends, boys will start, like, boys will start until mid-February. Girls will start, their first game is scheduled to be January 8th. Their first scheduled game, I just wanted to make sure that was okay. Questions, comments on that?
Other coaches?
Yeah, who are the coaches, Zach?
For girls, Monica Kirchner is going back. And I talked to Bailey Miller, she said she still would. She was also a coach a year ago.
Who's the boys' coach?
The boys' coach, coach is both of the two coached a year ago, still said they would coach again this year. Josh Salisbury and Mark Cutman. Any other questions, comments on that?
Do we need to have an action for that?
No, because I think that was approved, right? You were just making sure it was okay, right? Was it approved before?
We tabled it.
We tabled it? I'll move to approve the middle school girls' basketball as presented. The movement seconded to proceed with middle school girls' basketball season as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye? In opposed? Okay, motion carries. 9-1-4 then, middle school boys' basketball. And move by Mr. Manning to approve middle school boys' basketball season as presented. Second by Mrs. Barry, sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye? In opposed? Motion carries then. 9-2 then, discussion possible action on open gym for middle school.
We have a rep here. This started as a discussion about open gym for all the kids to come in and just have movement and stuff, but it does say middle school basketball protocols up at the top, so I'll, I'll add it slightly a little bit. Just copy what you need.
So I just emailed Julie and asked if it was possible to do, start open gym for, for middle school players, just so we can start to get them going on activities. You know, they have been void of activities since last February. And so I didn't want to wait until February for the, for the boys' basketball. And so if we could just start open gyms with the basketball players, I talked to Shelley and Monica and seen if they were interested in starting them as soon as possible. So Julie said, what are your, you know, protocols and staffing and all that stuff? So basically, all I said, I just made up a document that kind of said the protocols would follow, and I copied basically what the high school said of what we would do for our open gym. Boys, we'd be looking at meeting once or twice a week, and we would start with something three together, but depending on numbers, if we had two larger numbers, we'd split up into two sections. I think girls is the same, once or twice a week, and same with them, they're starting together, but then depending on numbers, kind of seeing where they're going from that. So basically, the protocols are the same as with the high school. The only thing I didn't have on there was temperature taken, and I talked to Julie about that, and that will something, that is something that we will be adding to that list, too.
So Kami, what times are you thinking with the gyms being used for practices now?
Right, and that, it just depends on when we, gym availability. So whenever we can, get in there, I guess. I, I don't know exactly when it's going to be, depending on, too, like, the boys, you know, if the boys have a game that night, obviously, you know, I won't be available, or we won't be available. Danny and I, and Janelle Jones will be heading the boys, and then Shelley and Monica Kirchner would be doing the girls' open gyms. So I had sent messages out to David and Matt Mazra, telling, telling them to tell me when they are using the gym so that we are not overlapping. I haven't gotten any messages from them, so as far as I know, they're not using the gym. Because they never said that they were, so. And I told them to tell me if they were, so, yeah.
They, some, they have a few times this year, like this week. So they need to communicate that with you. On game nights, because all getting locker rooms clean for road teams to come in and just, like, there's the nights where, like, the boys played, and David just went down there, it's not even after that locker room, so my crew would have to clean it before the road teams came in. Technically, it's available through the rest of this month. Obviously, once January gets, that it's not going to be used to be girls to start, but that's really.
Anyway, we would definitely only use it when it is open. That's kind of the thought process, I guess.
So I, I had a question. You mentioned combining the kids at practice, and we are cohorting the middle school. Combining them was, or moving them around was tabled at the last meeting, so I'm just bringing that. Now, we're going to mix them and cohort them, so.
And we, and we can, we can run separate, we can do eighth grade, seventh grade, all separate, and that, that's.
But is that the plan? Because right now, we are cohorting the middle school.
Yeah, so there's a seven, eight that are currently separate.
Right.
That you can separate whether.
No, we, I mean, well, it's up to, it's, it's up to you. I guess my plan was to have eighth grade.
I'm not there.
Eighth grade playing together.
Is it just like you?
And if you wanted to separate something eighth, I mean, we could do that, that'd be totally fine.
You know, the hard thing is that in my daughter's class, she's an AA, I believe, there's only like two or three girls, there's more than like maybe five girls in that whole class, and only like three of them ball sports. Because I had thought about that in volleyball, you know, but they, I was talking to her about it, so one of them, there's only three of us that are in volleyball. There's only five in school or something. I mean, it's very, there wouldn't be enough for me to.
What are we planning on doing when, when middle school sports start? It's so hard over then? What is the?
That was just on, I just was reading minutes from last time and it.
Because they need to be cohesive.
Yeah. And like Zach said, wrestling is already happening.
And wrestling, I'm assuming that cohorting, seventh and eighth are not charging together?
And other people.
I would imagine that we wouldn't stop cohorting if they're gonna mix together in wrestling, basketball and open gym. There's no sense in cohorting them during the day.
No, but we should be making the decision on what's best academically and not what's best at 3:30.
Right, that's true.
I also need to think about mental. I mean, the reason why I came to the board for this is because I was definitely seeing a huge mental breakdown, I shouldn't say breakdown, but I mean, my middle school son was really starting to feel the effects of not doing any activities since February and that mental what's the word I'm looking for? We gotta be thinking about the, the mental aspect of our middle school kids too, you know, and so had, by at least doing an open gym. It's going to help academically as well, you know, getting them, doing stuff again. Getting them in the gym, getting them participating. It's going to get them to thrive and that's right, why we're still having, why we can still have high school sports is because it gets those kids to to push themselves academically if they see that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And when I told Sammy that this was being brought up, I mean, his demeanor changed immensely. Just the fact that this is a possibility is huge and it was huge to a lot of a lot of middle schoolers to say, this is a possibility, we might be able to get to do something and not just sit at home. So.
And moved by Mr. Manning to have open gym.
All started.
By Mrs. Bosinski, all in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed? Okay, 93, discussion possible action on allowing seniors to leave during attack time.
We'd like to table this, they are still working on their plan.
No action then? 94, discussion on hiring fifth grade teacher.
Always gonna look to the fiscal responsibility of the district and we did have a teacher resign. There's potential of placing those two classes under the auspices of one teacher. It's a total of 20 students in the class with four currently being virtual and 16 students in a class, so I think it makes sense to not hire a fifth grade teacher. We've had quite a few discussions with this and then Ms. Shane's report earlier, she's already advocated that we do, so I'm leaving it up to the board.
Don't we have to split them next year? Isn't that part of this for fifth grade?
We don't necessarily have to split them next year. We could have all 20 of them in one class.
In middle school, but it will be two fifth grade next year.
Exactly, like, right.
Oh, yeah, we have to do it, but it would also give us the time we need to hire the correct person.
So here's my question. The remaining fifth grade teacher is brand new, started the school year late, has a baby at home, so what kind of support system would we put in place for her? If we put her in charge of all 20 kids?
She would have some more parent time, probably.
So my counter is that the consistency of the learning of the students at this time, it's best to have a second person. They've already, like you mentioned, so they started with a sub at the beginning of the year. Then during COVID, the teacher that has resigned was out several times and he had to teach virtually due to COVID situations. We've already budgeted for disposition and it's a short-term fix. Same with the middle school reading, you know, and Andrea mentioned it's study halls and things like that, but that's a different, so. I still advocate that it's best for these groups of students this time. The money to me isn't worth the learning that, I mean, that's a whole upheaval of their reality for a three-month fix.
So these are temporary positions and not the permanent for next year as well?
Not at this time. So right now we have in place a teacher teaching through the end of the semester, you know, giving us time to, you know. We do have two people that have shown interest in it and posted in weekend. If, if they don't meet our criteria, I would feel comfortable if you would allow us to continue the long-term of a temporary position until the summer when potentially more graduates would be or people would be shifting around at that. But I do think it's best that we continue with this split classroom.
I would concur with that.
I would, I would like to commend Mrs. Brady, and sometimes it's hard to be the devil's advocate, but you have to look at all sides and, you know, I also commend Kathleen, Mrs. Shane on, you know, saying that too. I think it's, you know.
We end up agree to disagree, but I gotta bring them up, so there's a possibility and I said, she's like, I don't want to disagree with you. I said, it's okay. Because we do have two different viewpoints.
I would just like to say publicly, that's one thing that I have enjoyed about the Ithaca district is that we can agree to disagree and be adults about it, realize it's professional and it's not personal. So I just want to throw that out there as one of my parting things. So I would second your answer.
So I don't see this as an action.
It's not really.
I'm just looking for direction, right?
Yes, we were looking for direction, so I just put a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I guess since there's no action to not to, to not hire a fifth grade teacher, we would just continue on with replacing the fifth grade teacher temporarily through the end of the school year. Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, 95 then, discussion on hiring reading teacher.
Same deal. We added reading, excuse me, to the middle school. And personally, I don't think we're gonna find somebody that can teach reading, but again, in the year of COVID, it might be easier to not rehire that for this school year. I would rather have us have a reading teacher, but I really don't think we're gonna find somebody. We've also taken half of the title position and made it a coaching position, so we would have, the other half of her job would be suspended, we wouldn't have help for those students, so I would everything that we continue to have a reading teacher for middle school and public elementary.
And do the same thing. We have, so I have someone in there now through the end of the semester. It would not be that same person, but to extend it with a temporary teacher and work with Andrea to train them up to do those strategies correctly and to fulfill the title as best we can. I don't know the legal stuff about title, but you know, to do what we could to continue that and then post it for summer and, you know, and, yeah.
I don't have enough time to decide what to do with all of these kids, so, I mean, we have to make some difficult decisions. If it wasn't rehired, we have to make some difficult decisions on. Because we are a parented Title I school, so when we would retest kids in January, we'd have to decide which kids have most need and so some questions may not be.
I would assume what, when we're getting kids back in the building here, there'll probably be some extra need for trying to get some of those kids up. My concern is, is what happens if we're not available to get somebody that we have some kind of a plan?
That's why I'm working on the training that I talked about. So this is, that was, this is Shane and I, we're talking about repairs and substitutes. That we have some sort of training in place that we, you know, this is what you do up there at this stage, this is what you do at this stage and, you know. I will have to spend time working with whoever is. And that's basically what I did with the substitutes, the long-term substitutes for the positions that, where they had, just had babies. I went in there and I modeled for them, whatever they needed my help in, whatever they asked me to do, I, I went into their home and I modeled for them how to do it. Or whatever they need, helping, helping, helping figure out my kids, my kids, can you we, Jen and I tested all the kids at the beginning of the school year and I had graphs so that they knew exactly these are the letters that these kids need to work on, these are the products both these kids need to work on, so I could easily help them how to teach those.
So it's hard enough to, to have subs and fill in, but then they need to learn how to do Zoom and School G and run the computer and the document camera and have kids here and kids on the screen and so both Ms. Shane and, and Mrs. Neekirk have been very helpful training our subs so that the kids have as best a flow as we can in the educational process. It's been very difficult.
Well, lots of teachers, Chris Willis helped, Emily Zaria helped, Kyle Lang helped. I mean, the teachers are really, because, you know, they're doing it more than I am, so it really takes them working together to figure out how to and the subs that we've trained are, do a good job, you know.
So again, just looking for direction.
We, well, we're doing action, obviously, we're just gonna.
Continue the position as is. Pursue replacing that.
Okay, for this, for the action. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, 96 then, discussion possible action adapting 21-22 calendar.
All right, Mrs. Lockwood was on the, on the calendar committee this year and she loves color. You can't see it black and white at all, so I did print it for everybody and there's a pile over there, so there are, rated, I'll just go through with it. The calendar committee did do this, we put a couple tweaks in it as it did, so new teacher training on the 19th and 20th. 24th, 25th, and 30th would be teacher in-service PLC days. The 26th is a teacher workday and that would also include the open house time. Then the 23rd, 27th and 31st are teacher, they can pick one of those three. We're gonna do nonviolent crisis intervention training. Those three days and they have to be here for one of them. First day of school is the first, the 15th is an early out. The 24th is the day before the fair, so the kids would go home early and the 25th is a fair. Again, 13th is an early out, 19th and 21st are parent teacher conferences and the 22nd is off for everybody, so they can be prepared. Third is an early out, 15th is an all-day PLC in-service, 24th is just everybody gets to go home a little early for Thanksgiving. December 8th and January 1st, they're both early outs. The 20th is the last, is, I'm sorry, the 19th is the last day of the quarter, the 20th would be a workday for the students and the 21st would be an all-day in-service. Same deal, 9th is an early out, February 21st is an all-day in-service for teachers. March 7th, oh, that's an all-day parent-teacher conference, right?
Instead of the two nights?
Instead of the two nights. The 16th is an early out. There's a spring break, so it goes from the 20th all the way up to April 1. The 14th is a early out for in-service for, for teachers and the 15th is, I believe, with Friday. May, and early out on the 11th, the last day of school will be the 3rd. Teacher in-service in the afternoon, 5th is graduation and 6th is all-day teacher in-service in PLC.
Make workday on the 3rd, half the early out on the 3rd for workday.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Third is early out for workday.
Yes. So there's 175 student days and 188 staff days. Elementary committee worked on this really on their own, so I appreciate that.
Questions, comments? On the, the March 7th, the all-day.
It's 11 to 7, parent-teacher conference.
Doing that versus two nights, what's the thinking?
Well, we take, hit up parents that can come in the daytime versus at night. We tried it this year.
We did it last year, we were supposed to do it this year.
Right.
We were supposed to do it, last year we did it, but obviously it didn't happen in the spring.
Right.
It worked out okay.
Elementary gets 100% or pretty close, middle and high get, they honestly is about the same. You just get different ones in the daytime. And you would at night, so. We'd like to see all parents at parent-teacher.
Even middle schooler school parents?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Questions, comments, concerns?
So this is a recommendation?
Yes.
I will sub move.
Moved by Mr. Brisbois to accept the 21-22 school calendar as presented. Second? And by Mrs. Rowe, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Yeah, calendar is accepted.
Well, that is the earliest ever.
I couldn't believe it. I'm trying to scoot things up so that we can get this stuff done in a timely manner, it's a bit hurried on last year, so.
97 then, discussion possible action on purchasing 4K devices.
So I'm sorry, I should have attached the P O over there. She's looking for the exact amount, so.
Chromebook?
Chrome tabs for the little ones, so we got them all the way from kindergarten through second grade and boy.
CDI.
CDI is the person that did it.
$11,725.
For 4K, there's 30 of them, correct?
Yes, there's 30.
And they're the same, they could, they could be used.
35.
They could be used in other areas if we have replacements that are needed.
And the little ones are working for the elementary very well and they're durable.
And this would be COVID money?
Yes.
I will move to approve purchasing of the 4K devices as presented.
Moved by Mr. Brisbois, seconded by Mr. Manning. Did we, did we say that exact cost?
$11,725.
Thank you. Roll call, boys.
Mrs. Bosinski, yes.
Mr. Brisbois?
Yes.
Mrs. Marion, yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Manning? Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 98, discussion possible action on accepting DPI peer-to-peer suicide prevention grant, $1,000.
Mrs. Katrina Johnson.
We should have that name now.
But she actually wrote for three different grants for Ithaca, Ritzland and Prairie to Sheen, and so we're doing a peer-to-peer suicide prevention thing for the whole region, so I'm very happy to, to suggest that we accept this.
Any special things we need to do or she's gonna spearhead it or what?
Yeah, she, it's, it's to get more sources of strength training and to get it so that it's more well-known in the non-school area.
So I would move that we would accept that $1,000 grant for the peer-to-peer suicide prevention.
And moved by Mrs. Peterson, that was seconded by Mr. Manning. Roll call, boys.
Mrs. Bosinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brisbois?
Yes.
Mrs. Marion?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Manning? Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and 99, discussion possible action on accepting resignation of board member.
Mrs. Bosinski is moving. Just in case anybody didn't have that.
So she has turned her letter of resignation into the clerk, which is to do that, it's been accepted, so it's really, we don't take action on it, it's just more informational. You know, we will be looking to appoint somebody to the, to the board. I talked to the, the school lawyer about it and her suggestion was to wait till the January meeting because all the people that would put in to run, if there's only one person that is, you know, put in papers, you know, one more person, put in papers that that person would be the logical person to appoint. And if there was more than one, then we would, at that point, have a discussion and pick who would be. That was her suggestion, I don't follow that, but it's, throw that out there for discussion.
I think that makes sense to, just take it up in the January meeting. We'll look at it then. I mean, let's see how many, and I've heard it on the radio today in the news about, I think it was today or yesterday about getting your name in if you wanted to, so always give some people up. I think you gave them a deadline today, wasn't it?
I forgot one at 4:59. There's somebody that passed a deadline.
Let's still think, we take it up on January, it wouldn't be able to vote until they take their oath of office, correct, and that, so.
Did she say anything about the lack of a treasure during that time?
Not really, other than, you know, with Mrs. Blazinski being the tracker, we would, you know, have to reappoint somebody.
I didn't know if there was.
She does not say anything. Um, but she did say that, the, where there was a question that if this person would then be running as an incumbent, because they were appointed to that, and the answer to that was no, they would still have to run, um, you know, so if they didn't put in papers, so if it was somebody that hadn't put in papers, we appointed, they would have to run as a write-in candidate in the elections, you see what I mean, if we appointed, somebody would not turn their papers in.
Right.
They would not be.
Well, wouldn't have to be write-in. If they missed the deadline.
But if they, if they missed that January fifth deadline.
Exactly right, if they missed that deadline, and then we appoint somebody in the eleventh meeting, at the January eleventh meeting, and has not filled out candidacy papers, they don't go on automatically as incumbents.
Then they do almost want to appoint somebody sooner, so that they have time to get papers in if they want, you know what I'm saying, like, what is the deadlines?
January fifth.
So, I mean, if you appoint, it's, I don't know. Well, but if they're really interested in it, they'd fill out paperwork and turn it in.
Yeah.
I mean.
That was, that was, her, her point was that by doing that, you know, we gave everybody a very, you know, long period to express interest, and if only one person did it, there's no discussion on, oh, you picked somebody over somebody, two people did that, then you would have your discussion on who would, you would want to appoint, that she thought that was a very logical way of doing things. I just called her because I wanted to make sure we were doing it legally. So, discussion on that?
So, so can we ask at this point, has there been more than one person that has?
Yes.
Has inquired, yeah.
Yeah, um, I have a list for, of the people, I think I was up to seven names in my pile.
That have inquired personally, or?
That have, they sent me a letter.
Telling that they were interested, there's only one that's turned in paperwork for running.
Right, only one person has done that, but I had nine people submit me a letter, basically I told them all they needed to do was give me their name, and, and a lot of them just sent me an email, I'm interested, it's Julie.
I guess we would need to have a motion on what way we wanted to proceed.
I do have a, and, and after closed, back into open, eleven point three is discussion and action, possible action on appointing a replacement student, and I don't know if you want to wait till that.
Yeah, because that's not really, nine point nine is more just saying goodbye to Susan.
Good. So we think, uh, this is for all her years of hard work and dedication and commitment, it's a, there's a lot of things going on other than in these meetings that I think people don't realize, so we thank her for her time. And wish her the best of luck up north there.
Thanks, we're gonna need it.
Any other discussion on that? Nine-ten, then, discussion possible action on accepting resignation of middle school track coach.
So Mrs. Thompson wrote a letter, esteemed Etika School Board members and administration, this letter is a formal resignation from my position as Etika Middle School Assistant Track Coach, effective as soon as approval is given, the decision to resign is a difficult one, as a value, and cheers to the time I've spent in that role, track is another extracurricular activity that is special to me, so I took my time weighing out the decision, I wanted to thank all of you for the wonderful opportunity I was able to be a part of for the past three seasons, helping our students learn about the sport that has brought me so much joy was one of the most rewarding experiences, if I can be of any help during this process, please feel free to reach out to me at any time, very sincerely, Julie Thompson.
Questions, comment on that?
Oh, she will be next.
Need a motion to accept her. And Mrs. Strain, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, Mr. Brisbois, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? We thank her for her service, and as she will be missed, so also thank her for giving us notice, that helps in some of those positions to find someone to develop. Nine-one, or nine-eleven, then, discussion possible action on policy, nine-eleven-one, uh, policy three fifty-two point oh-four, school fleet safety program.
All right, so this was, it's gone to policy of, to a couple of meetings because it's quite lengthy, um, basically what it does is it defines more rules and gives us some guidelines, it actually came from the insurance company, so what we did is we shortened it because Mrs. Blazinski read through it, and it's very redundant. So, um, it's nineteen pages, it actually has, um, so like, we need an accident reporting kit, so that'll have to happen, things like that, um, but at the end, which was helpful in when we get this far, so now there's, um, evaluation reports, accident or training records, things for, uh, Mrs. Apple to use, um, while we are, you know, hiring and keeping track of all our bus things, so, um, things to put right in the buses, and they can see EMC, insurance gave us this, so they're gonna be on it, so inspection report, so anyway, it's a, it's, it's suggested by the insurance company that we have something similar to this, all I did was take some stuff out of it, basically, and make it fit in a little bit.
Is there also the form in there giving, where we ask for permission to do DMV record poll, like, twice a year, so that we can check their driving record?
Yeah.
Instead of just when they start.
Right, because otherwise, if they don't self-report, we really don't know.
Right, uh, sorry, I'm pretty sure it's in there. Certificate of Evaluations. It's an annual motor vehicle driver's certificate of evaluation, so they're certifying that they have not getting the questionnaire of all controlled substances, so then it kind of just, um.
Gives us that nice foundation for keeping track of things better.
I don't know if that answers that, though, is if they're in there.
I think I have the form.
Okay.
I mean, and it came from the insurance company, and there's actually a website that there might be a very small fee that we have to pay for them to actually do the record poll.
We can always add that form into this.
If we want to do that, we could amend that onto here now, to include that form, or if you want to look it over and then add it at another time.
I, um, can you look at this one, is this, this gives us permission?
This is self-reporting, though, this isn't giving us permission to go through DMV to, unless that does.
But also, like, it's not illegal to use CCAP anyway, right?
Or you can, yeah, you can use CCAP, but.
Probably if they know that we're gonna pull that.
If they weren't taking it.
Record.
So we can do it with the, with the addition, it's, to me, that's another form that we went, and so.
Any other questions, comments on that? Motion to accept the policy as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Mrs. Blazinski to accept policy three fifty-two point oh-four as presented, your second, second by Mr. Manning, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-eleven-two, safety plan, EOP.
Yeah, and again, all I did on this one was, of course, I updated, we had a couple people switch out of the team, made sure it's linked, so, um, the biggest thing we have in here is that we had a very large, long su- suicide slash sudden death, it was like twenty-five pages, for an emergency, we still have that policy, but we didn't leave it in the book. And of course, I always update the AED and our telephone list and all that kind of stuff, so it's, the substance except that one section has changed.
I would have moved that we accept the safety plan as presented.
Second.
In policy.
Move by Mrs. Peterson, second by Mr. Brisbois, accept safety plan, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries a nine-eleven-three, uh, policy five fifty-one, the budget.
So you can see I, um, I changed the budget because the district administrator doesn't do a lot of this, like, business manager does, so, um, again, this hadn't been done for quite a few years, so, uh, superintendent.
The budget hasn't been done for. Get on it, Cheryl.
No.
Boy, we're just lying by the seat of our pants, and I.
No. I'm just excited because it truly, after we're done approving these, and they're all approved, that, yeah, I've literally gone through every single policy we give, literally.
It was really fun reading, too.
Yeah, it was so much fun, and now Susan's got in there, so.
We'll point somebody.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, policy five fifty-one, the budget, the changes as presented.
And Mrs. Blazinski, is there a second? And Mrs. Ferian, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-eleven-four, then, five fifty-three, purchasing.
Very few small, so we added fax and email, because apparently it used to be only mail. There was a, the principal, we moved the whole, we moved this one to a different page, we kept it, except for the, um, language, but I created two different ones, so five fifty-three, oh-four through oh-seven is now off of this one, I don't like twenty-five page line policies, so I just created two different policies, um, so as you can tell, there's a matter of like, two or three words, and then stopping it there, creating a new policy.
Any questions, discussion?
Also move, uh, amended, uh, five, uh, five fifty-three on purchasing policy.
Move by Mr. Brisbois, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Ferian, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-eleven-five, then, policy five fifty-three dot oh-four through oh-seven, any travel expenses, credit card use.
Yeah, so that's the form for travel expenses again, um, we took out the union agreement, another form here for using your credit card, um, yeah, bargaining agreement, and that's, sorry, and on this page, this is a form, so I remove it and make it a pop procedure versus a policy, and that's why it's linked up here now, so that form is a separate entity and signing all that kind of stuff, so it's procedure, not policy, that way if I need to change it, I'll have something out there, but the policy is right here.
And move by Mr. Manning to accept policy five fifty-three dot oh-four through oh-seven, your second.
I'll second.
By Mrs. Blazinski, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-eleven-six, then, policy three oh-three dot ten through three oh-three dot eleven, assignments and supervision.
Basically, we just changed the title of it, doesn't make any sense. Mrs. Ferian, to make sure we were upfront and truthful, so it's here to get approved with a new title, we didn't change anything else, this is the whole policy.
And move by Mr. Manning to accept that name change of that policy.
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Peterson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-eleven-seven, policy five fifty-seven, food service.
And I took the district administrator out, put a business manager, um, I updated the discrimination handle for language to the same, everything else.
Any other questions, comments on that?
I would move that we accept the food service policy as presented.
Second.
Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Brisbois, all in favor of accepting policy five fifty-seven as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-twelve, then, discussion possible action on setting committee dates, nine-twelve-one, finance and personnel on Monday, January eleventh, at six-thirty PM, that would be before the next board meeting.
So in, uh, in the absence of a treasurer, then, are you running that meeting, or is none of running it?
None would.
Okay, I'm curious.
I'll make that motion, that we accept that date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to set, uh, finance and personnel, January eleventh, at six-thirty PM, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-twelve-two, then, policy, setting policy for Wednesday, uh, January twenty-one at five PM.
Wednesday is January twentieth.
Oh, is it? Well, we better set it for the twentieth.
Any, all right, any other discussion on that? Motion?
Oh, I'll motion.
Been moved by, uh, Mrs. Rowe to set policy on Wednesday, January twentieth, at five PM, is there a second? And Mr. Ferian, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-twelve-three, buildings and grounds, Wednesday, January thirteenth, move to approve, uh, Mr. Brisbois, is there a second? And Mr. Manning, all in favor of setting buildings and grounds, Wednesday, January thirteenth, at five PM, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries nine-twelve-four, curriculum, set curriculum for Thursday, January seventh.
I find that motion, I think it's been set already.
Just for information, then, okay? Okay, then, nine-thirteen, thirteen-one, um, setting next board meeting, Monday, January eleventh, at seven PM.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Brisbois, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion, uh, the motion carries, uh, next, uh, normal school board meeting is January eleventh, at seven PM, okay, then, ten, adjourn the call session under Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight-five-one-C for consideration, employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation, data of any public play over which the government or body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, uh, ten-one, discussion regarding the performance evaluation of district employee, teaching staff administration, and our coaching staff, uh, will be imposed session, not less than five minutes, but probably longer, the motion to go into call session. By Mr. Manning, second by Mrs. Ferian.
Yeah, I did it. Hey, Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisbois.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferian.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
We will session go down to the. And move by Mrs. Peterson, appoint Joe Brown to replace, uh, school board, the open school board position now, is there a second? Uh, Mrs. Rowe, uh, roll call.
Mrs. Blazinski.
I abstain.
Mr. Brisbois.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferian.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Yes.
And we thank all the people that, uh, put their name in and encourage them to, uh, to jump out of the school board for final candidacy papers, yep. This election and other elections, it's nice to have people participate in the process. Um, then, uh, or then, discussion possible action on proving a merit for a member to serve at Etika. Um, then, uh, or then, discussion possible action on proving a merit or member who served at Ithaca.
Mr. Kylie Lofty. Lofty. Lofty.
Nine hundred service hours. Motion to accept.
I just filled it.
And it was moved by Mrs. Rowe to accept that. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Brisbois. Very good, Cheryl.
Yep.
Okay, do we need a roll on that? It's no money to the district, is it?
Well, we already approved of the grant, it was gonna cost us twenty-seven hundred dollars, but it's costing us less than that.
Okay, so let's do a roll, we'll just be safe.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisbois.
Yep.
Mrs. Ferian.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yeah.
And then, uh, eleven-five, then, discussion possible action on hiring part-time technology person recommendations. And Ferian's at twelve dollars an hour, and I think he's done this in the past, right?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, kind of renewing.
Right, and he knows that it's part-time and temporary.
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
And Mrs. Blazinski, is there a second? Uh, Mr. Manning, roll call, please.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisbois.
Yep.
Mrs. Ferian. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, twelve, then, the adjournment. Your second. Uh, Mr. Ferian, second. I can.
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Second is the hiring.
Uh, I did, right?
Yeah.